Good afternoon. I want to thank everyone for coming at this very important meeting of the City Council as we do the people's work. The hour is exactly seven o'clock and we'd like to get started. So at this time, if you would, you would please stand for the invocation which will be given by Dr. Curtis Edmonds and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance. Dr. Edmonds.
Dear God, we thank you for this journey that you've allowed us to embark upon this morning. We thank you, Lord, that we've gathered in this place not for individual things but for the well-being of the Commonwealth of Virginia and the city of Portsmouth. Now bless us and be with us. Keep our minds targeted on the things that will make our city great. We praise you and we bless your name, for it's in Jesus' name we ask it. Amen.
(inaudible) (inaudible) of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Dr. Edmonds. And members of City Council, would you please indicate your presence electronically?
Seven members of City Council are present.
Okay. Members of City Council, you have before your consideration the minutes of a call meeting of February the 24th, 2015. Are there any corrections to the minutes?
Move adoption.
Second.
Mayor, we have a motion and a second, and you're voting electronically. The minutes are adopted, 7-0.
Okay. Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir. Ladies and gentlemen, City Council rules require a limit of up to five minutes to speak. As you approach the speakers podium, you will notice a timer. At the beginning of your five minutes, you will see a green light. Four minutes into your remarks, you will notice a yellow light. At the end of five minutes, you will see a red light, hear a beep, and we ask that you conclude your comments at that time. While speakers have an opportunity to address council on matters of public concern, all comments should be made in a manner that respects the seriousness of the forum and should not be made in a belligerent, sarcastic, or demeaning fashion. A speaker who fails to observe this basic rule of decorum will be deemed out of order and not allowed to conclude his or her comments. Unfinished business, 15-66, use permit, item B, Z1501. Glendale, request of George P. Moody to rezone .304 acres located at 3433 and 3435 Portsmouth Boulevard from general mixed-use, GMU, excuse me, to urban residential in order to construct two single-family residences. The property is designated as commercial on the city's comprehensive plans generalized future land use map. Deferred from the February 10, 2015, City Council meeting. Vision principle: robust economy for working men and women. Electronic roll call, and Mr. Moody is here for questions.
Okay. I'd like to move for approval. Okay.
Sir, just before that, I have a speaker. We need to have the speaker come forward.
Okay.
Mr. George Moody.
Can you see here? Good evening, Council, visitors, and others. I'm here this afternoon to state my case for the rezoning or the use of two lots on Portman Boulevard, 3433, 3435. I'm going to make this as brief as possible, and I hope you'll understand. First of all, I want you to realize that this issue has very little to do with the plan and or the zoning. It's a deliberate attempt to quash or prevent a project. To begin with, I had a conversation with Mr. Hartley some time ago, but the one I think most important, and the one that you would like to hear was last Friday between three and four o'clock. Mr. Hartley called me and said we needed to talk. I hope you're bear with me, because we talked for about 15 or 20 minutes, so I can't be verbatim, but I hope you get the gist of what I'm going to say. I asked Mr. Hartley what did he want to talk about. He mentioned the property that I just mentioned, and I said, "What do you have in mind?" He told me. To begin with, I presented a plan for apartments that was turned down. I presented a plan for two residential family homes. That was turned down. In conversation, I asked Mr. Hartley how did he arrive at turning down two projects when it was certain that the property could be used for something? He told me he made a mistake. I hesitated for a moment, and I said, "You made one mistake." He didn't reply. So we went on, and he told me what he had to offer. He said, "You can build five apartments on this property, and that's it." I hesitated for a moment, and I said, "You turned down four. Now you tell me I can build five?" I said, "Do you realize what you're saying?" Mr. Hartley replied, "I know it doesn't make sense, but you have to accept it." I said, "Now you're going to tell me that you can build five apartment homes, and it's more parking for five apartments than it is for two residential homes?" He didn't reply. So he said, "Let's meet money sometimes," and I asked Mr. Hartley, "What were we going to meet for?" He said, "To go over what we just talked about." I said, "But you just told me what I had to accept, so I don't see any use of us spending any more time." Ladies and gentlemen, I'm sure that Portsmouth has responsible citizens and leaders to understand what's going on here. In a previous meeting, someone mentioned that the poll tax had gone away. That's not true.
Mr. Moody.
The poll tax didn't go anywhere. What we did was camouflaged it and mixed it with other ingredients as a deterrent.
Mr. Moody.
Poll tax still exists.
Mr. Moody, your time's up, sir.
Thank you very much.
Just want to let you know that we had a discussion in our work session prior to coming in here about your project, and I think we have pretty much all in agreement to allow you to do the single-family homes. We discussed in great detail, and I don't want to speak for the council because we have to vote, but there is a dilemma there, and we see your point, and we see it loud and clear. And staff actually briefed the council about both options, and either one, and the pros and cons of each, and I think just through our conversation, we all see your point, and I'm hopeful when we take this vote here that we're going to allow you to build two single-family homes up there like you suggested.
Thank you very much, sir.
Okay. Thank you, sir. All right. Dr. Whitaker.
I was going to echo the same to Mr. Moody, and thank you for your perseverance.
Okay. Thank you. All right. Madam Clerk?
We have no additional speakers.
Move for approval. Move for approval.
Mayor, we have a motion and a second, and you'll be voting electronically. This item is approved, 7-0. City manager's report, 15-109, adoption of an ordinance accepting a grant in the amount of $18,850 from the U.S. Department of Homeland Security and appropriating set funds in the FY 2014-15 Grants Fund for use by the police department to expand the port security surveillance camera system. Vision principles: leading maritime center and efficient responsive government. Electronic roll call, and I have no registered speakers.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, and you'll be voting electronically. This item is adopted, 7-0. New business, 15-110, boards and commissions, Vice Mayor Simmons.
We have no appointments this evening, however, we encourage all citizens to take a look on our website or speak with the city clerk about openings that we have. We need volunteers. We need your expertise to help us in bringing these ordinances to the table.
15-111, items submitted by council members.
Okay. First of all, I've got a couple of pieces of good news I'd like to report. This is congratulating Portsmouth Christian Varsity. They had a competition, once again, a national competition in Winston-Salem, North Carolina, and I can't remember last year or a year before that they won the national cheering competition, and we gave them a huge shout-out. This year, they won first place in a music division, first place in a non-music division, grand champions overall. Many of the Cheer Scholar Awards for great GPA scores. This is our Portsmouth Christian, right here in our city, and the Portsmouth Christian fans won the Megaphone Award for the best fans. So I want to congratulate Portsmouth Christian and the great work that they do there, and it's always good to pass on that kind of positive and good information, and congratulations to not only the kids but the staff and administration for all you do. Thank you. Next, I want to congratulate, while I'm in this mode, our employees. I saw potholes being filled. That has been a huge issue, and have had people call. I actually had someone call back today and thank me, and I forgot to even call the manager about it. So that just tells you how keen of our employees are, and I don't know, Yusef, that's your crowd that does that? Yes, sir? And thank you, guys, for that. I know there's plenty more, and I'm sure you're going to keep calling, but we're doing all we can and as fast as we can, so that's great news as well. And lastly, I want to thank Regent University. As you all know, each year we have a mayor's forum, and each one of the South Side mayors speak on a topic that they give us to kind of keep us all somewhat guided in a certain direction. And this year's topic was talking about the recession. Is it over? How is it affecting our cities, and what do we think of it from a regional perspective? And as it was reported in the media, we were all pretty much in unison about, we believe we've turned the corner. I thought of our Cessar when she gave us our great report about turning the corner, and so I kind of used that as a segue into not only talking about how we are turning the corner in Hampton Roads, but I talked about the diversity piece. And I know some of you come up and you make light of this word diversity and using your definition or trying to claim we're implying another definition, but this region is 1.7 million people, and it's 51% female, and it's 40% minority. This is one of the most diverse regions in the country. Now, one of the concerns that we've had, and Dr. Jim Cook, who is professor or president emeritus at Old Dominion University, reported for the last three years, the Hampton Roads region has had what he termed "outmigration" of citizens where all the other regions, in the mid-Atlantic regions and elsewhere, had a "inmigration," meaning folks are leaving Hampton Roads and not coming back here. And so I couched my speech around why are we losing these people, why are we sending our children off to college to be educated, and they're finding it more appealing to go to other regions like Charlotte, Atlanta, Tucson, Orlando, other regions that are a little bit more diverse, and they can get startup companies and all of those types of things. That's a huge indicator. So whether we've turned the corner or not, I talked about all of the development we have going on here in Portsmouth, whether it's under contract or construction. We've got some 675 units downtown here valued at about $98 million. I mean, I was very pleased with talking about our redevelopment of our Frederick Boulevard corridor, and I made a comparison from the Mid-City days to now, and the same thing on Victory Boulevard from our old Tower Mall days to now. We can do all of those things at a city, but if we don't invest in our human capital and if we don't address this issue of diversity and making sure that our region and our cities are open for business for all people, we're going to continue this outmigration. And I was really surprised, and I thought I was the only one going to address that, but the day before, the mayor of Virginia Beach had his State of the City, which was a huge success, and his main focus was talking about this concern of this outmigration in Hampton Roads, and we can't afford that. So it's up to each and every one of us here to get together and have this conversation and make sure that when we are sending our best and brightest off to college, that they can come back here, and whether they want to start a business, or whether they want to do business, or whether they want equal employment, those are things that we need to wrestle with and start playing games about whether it's race-baiting or not, or whether it's whatever the term we're using, because this is a major issue. Three years in a row in Hampton Roads, we've had an outmigration. So with that, I started out with good news. That was good news because it was telling it like it is, and it's something that we all need to wrap and get our arms around because it's vital to not only Hampton Roads but cities like Portsmouth. And so with that, I'll defer to Vice Mayor Simmons.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm going to play on your diversity comment, because the lead article in today's hot-off-the-press Virginia Magazine, which is their annual economic issue, is our very own new Economic Development Director, Chuck Rigney, and the title of the article is called "The Value of Diversity." And in this case, it talks about creating business and creating jobs that are not centered around the military, diversifying in employment so that we are not also dependent on the Navy and the Coast Guard. It's a fabulous article about the region. It talks about the significant employment in Portsmouth, particularly at the Naval Shipyard and not only the Naval Hospital but Mirrorview Hospital. So, good job, Mr. Rigney. Thank you. Make us proud, and that's it.
Very good. All right. Very good. Dr. Whitaker.
Yes, mine is for the city manager, and it's in line with diversity. Can you give us an update on the disparity study process? I know that MGT is collecting data, and some communication is going back and forth, and at this point, because it's more of an audit mode, council really can't intervene yet until that report. So if you could give us an update on where they are with that.
Let me just interject before the manager does that. We actually, in December, had them on a wire feed to give us an update, and I think they told us that they were going to get a draft to us the end of January or February. I think that was the timeframe, and so that's a very valid question, Dr. Whitaker.
Let me check. I'll check and get it out tomorrow.
Okay. Very good. Thank you. Anything else, Dr. Whitaker?
Also, the status of, Mr. Manager, the status of the disaggregated data from Human Resources that was requested, and also the fire and police that was requested at the last meeting.
I sent that to council already.
I hadn't. How did you send it? I didn't get it.
Hard copy.
You mailed it?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Appreciate it. All right.
Anything else, sir?
That's it.
Okay. Madam Clerk?
15-112, report on pending items, and we have none this evening.
Very good.
15-113, non-agenda speakers. Our first speaker is Mr. Randy Bailey.
How are you all doing this evening?
How you doing, Mr. Bailey?
Unfortunately, I'm back. And I'd like to thank Ms. White and her staff, as always. Mr. Moody, I did look up something, and I find that we're both graduates of the Air Force Loadmaster School. And the first thing I'd like to address is our chief of police, because I owe him an apology. I did misspeak last week. He did not recommend that we send our young people to the regional jail. His comment was that if we were to keep them in the venue of possibly getting them into a law enforcement job, that they could possibly get a job there in purview of keeping them in a job sequence like that. He did not recommend that they go there, or did he wish that they do that? It was his thought that they could possibly do that. Personally, myself, I wouldn't do that because you take a young mind and put them in there with criminals, and that's how you get contraband in jail, because the criminals tell them, "Hey, you want to make some fast money? Well, crime pays until you get caught." And I don't actually think that that's a good idea. I still think that if you guys want to put together a college program and educate them and then move them into a police department, get 10 years out of them, I mean, I think that would be the way to go, and it would be something that the city could build on. Even if you pick one or two a year, it gives you a pool you could build from that, you know, something to think about. The next thing I want to talk about is this year's budget, and what I'm referring to is last year, when I was here, I asked you about 100% disabled veterans, property tax on vehicles. All the other cities do it. Any chance maybe veterans here can get that? You know, can we look into that? Get some kind of a study? Maybe that's something that Dr. Whitaker can start hammering on instead of working with the school board, seeing as that's a conflict of interest to him. So instead of working on school board, he could work on veterans' fairs. All the rest of you guys work on school boards, though. The other thing that you voted on last week was the thing about homeless people and providing them with money for rent. Downtown between Elm and Effingham on Queen Street, you have a congregation of individuals, about 75 of them, that unfortunately, the police department doesn't know what to do with. Everybody claims they're homeless. They're not. There are people from Section 8 housing that came from Alibaba and every place else that was torn down. They still live in Section 8, but they can't gather in the groups because it's illegal for them to do that. So they go back to their old haunt down there, and they gather in a large group, and they party. They drink, they do crack, they defecate, they do whatever they want. The churches show up and feed them. Oasis shows up and gives them clothes and do whatever else. A preacher showed up last Sunday and had church service for them. The owner of the property then has to clean the mess up. The city writes him tickets, finds him. And that's something else maybe Dr. Whitaker could work on. Maybe he can find something for all those people to do, find some place that they could go hang out and have their party instead of hanging out on that guy's property down there. Because at one time, I went downtown to see if something could be done when Patrick was the head of the department instead of our new guy, because a young lady had a business that she was going to work with the Naval Shipyard, and she was going to run a piece of property down there. But all those people hanging around, most of her employees were girls, and they were afraid of all those drunks and winos down there. And so she took her business, and she went to Norfolk because she was afraid to set up in Portsmouth. Drove the business out of Portsmouth. So now she has to take her business, and she has to come through the tunnels, so now she's got to pay tunnel tolls. Not good for her business. Another thing that's not good for your economics: the tunnels. So that's what we've got to work on, guys.
Thank you, Mr. Bailey. And let me just say thank you for making the correction of the chief's comments, because what the chief was trying to convey to all of us was some type of pathway for these individuals until they're of age, till they can become a part of our team. And so he, thank you for making that correction. And the second one with our disabled vets, we have asked our manager to go look into that, to address this issue this year. Now, we've got some real tight budget challenges coming up upon us, but one of those things was to do just what you had mentioned. I think Mr. Joe Wright and several others have been beating that drum, and I think most of us on council want to see that happen. So thank you for your comments. Would, in the future, if you would direct those to the whole body and not personalize a individual council member, I'd appreciate that as well.
One thing I will say is when I stick my foot in my mouth, I will apologize to those that I stick my foot in my mouth.
Very good. I'm getting there. I'm going to catch up with you. I'm not there yet. Thank you. Good night.
My name is Betty Ashbery, and I live in the Churchland section of Portsmouth. And I don't know why it is when we see bad behavior, we're either afraid to speak up and say something, or we're either so naive, we think we leave it long, long enough it'll go away. But I'm an old lady, 2-year-old lady, who is not afraid, and I'm certainly not naive. So, Mr. Mayor, if you want to wrap your gavel tonight and have me escorted from chamber, I'm sure it would make a fine story for Andy Fox or the Virginian Pilot that this 82-year-old lady was ejected for stating what's been on so many minds since the beginning of the year. I'm addressing Councilman Whitaker, as I would address any member of the Mayor Holly's Portsmouth family that's conducting themselves in such a disruptive and rude manner. I am in no way intimidated or impressed by your actions since you've been on council. We were warned what to expect if you were elected, and that has come to fruition. I replied that I hoped at some point you would realize that you work for the betterment of all the people. You've not given us that impression as yet. We were also told that likely that would never happen. Since your time on council, you've attempted to tell the manager how to run the city, make it appear you know more about the law than the city attorney, and that you know better how to run the Fire and Police Department. It'll be interesting to see which department will come next for your attack. Leave the Fire and Police Departments alone to do the fine job of taking care of our city and its citizens. These departments don't need your assistance. I have the privilege of both knowing Chief Hargus and Chief Barfield, and they are top of the line, cream of the crop. You're hopping on a plan and procedure for hiring for police and fire. My suggestion for you would be, as the old saying goes, "Put your money where your mouth is." Try your hand at trying to convince better qualified candidates to apply, and after that, you take the written test. You have a background test, drug test, agility test, and then the street training, and then you would know all the hard work that goes into hiring qualified candidates for the two departments. Counsel's been addressed by several citizens concerning bullying. Your attacks on certain members of staff in work sessions, in my opinion, have been definitely bullying. In the small amount of time I spend in classes on psychology, it was explained that people who continually have to put people down or try to convince people they're smarter than everyone else most likely suffer from low self-esteem. Mayor James Holly worked hard to bring you Mayor James Holly worked hard to bring unity to the citizens in this historical city of ours. All of us must continue to keep his good work ongoing for our city to grow and thrive. Mayor Holly was respected by all, and he returned that respect to all the citizens of his Portsmouth family. If you would like to respect me, as you did Deborah, by telling me that I am a mere citizen, and I have no right to instruct you on how to behave, be my guest. It would really prove my point. As my great-grandmother used to say, and she said it frequently to me, oh, and a different gender, "Councilman Whitaker, you're behaving like a spoiled little boy, who, when he doesn't get his way, throws a tantrum and needs a good spanking." To the rest of council, my heart aches that trust and confidence that I placed in you to take care of the city that I love, was born in and expected to live, my remaining days, has lessened in the past few weeks, due to your silence regarding Councilman Whitaker's behavior. Silence conveys consent. I neither want or need any of your comments from council, as the old saying goes, actions speak louder than words.
Mr. Steve Carroll?
Egan, Mayor, members of staff and council. Mayor Wright and, and Councilwoman Simmons, you both own businesses in the city. If your overhead costs were 550% of your competitor next door, how long do you think you'd stay in business? Hold that thought. Before council's official documentation, that you've seen before, the school board currently is requesting somewhere in the neighborhood of $12 million in an increase, a large increase. Over the years, certain school board members have continuously complained that the city does not adequately fund our schools. There is evidence to suggest that that is not true. Page one shows that in fiscal year 2013, Portsmouth provided supplemental funding to our schools at 107% above the state minimum required local effort. Second only in tidewater, Eastern tidewater, to Virginia Beach at 121%. Page two, this is the most condemning fact. In fiscal year 2011, 2012, the state superintendent's report, the administrative staff, per 1,000 students in the Portsmouth school system, was 550% above that of Virginia Beach, arguably the largest school system, or one of the largest in Eastern tidewater. 550%. Mr. Whitaker? Instead of our teachers having the classroom materials and time to focus on teaching basic fundamentals of reading, writing, and arithmetic, informative learning years in elementary school, our teachers are burdened with endless administrative testing, chores, and draconian requirements for filing lesson plans. What is council funding? Are we funding efficient operation of schools, or pork barrel jobs program for overpaid school administrators? And while it can be argued that some of these figures are dated back to 2012, it is the grand jury's report, not Steve Carroll's comments, or any other citizen, that condemned the conduct of the school board. The grand jury heavily condemned and rebuked them as a body for the defective deceptive and illegal fiscal conduct, namely, the $52 million over a five-year period. I uncovered this document Monday, that I had never seen before. I'm not going to read the whole thing, but it's an official report from the city. It wasn't $52 million over five years, it was $92 million over eight years, that was illegally appropriated by the school board. Wasn't it? Because you've seen this before, I haven't. Grand jury report, I'm quoting, "allowed to funnel funds from those devoted to our most important asset, the educators of our children, to facility, maintenance, repairs, and constructions," end quote. Does that sound like it's for the kids, Mr. Whitaker? The grand jury recommended that you fund the school system by category and quarterly. Mr. Whitaker suggested to you three weeks ago, ignore the grand jury recommendation. You're not bound by it. I have every confidence that council will use better judgment than Councilman Whitaker. Thank you.
Mr. Barry Randall?
Good evening. My name is Barry Randall, and my address is on the record. Dr. Whitaker, I'd like to thank you for not reaching out to Mayor Kenny Wright to rescue you, because you don't have to speak up to that foolishness that these people insist on coming down here to person may attack you. Mayor Kenny Wright, I would like the same respect that you all gave that white lady, when she stood up here after you told that gentleman back there to not directly relate their words to certain council. It's been about two or three weeks of council meetings that I purposely didn't come to. Mr. Moody, you did not run me away at all. I'm here today because I got a phone call this morning from the city attorney, Mr. George Wilson. So, again, I'm here to ask of the council, my situation with Mr. Moody, is that a private matter, or is that a city matter? Because Mr. Wilson gave me a lesson two weeks ago or so, telling me that I can't come down to city council, speaking things that are between myself and Mr. Moody. However, Mr. Wilson called me today, asking me about tapes in reference to Mr. Moody, when he called me. I have an issue, because I asked Mr. Wilson, do he represent Mr. Moody? Because we all know that Mr. Moody reached out to the city attorney for council. And from my understanding, Mr. Wilson told me, no, he doesn't represent Mr. Moody. Well, you don't represent me. So I'm trying to figure out why did he feel it necessary to call me in reference to a legal matter? We have so many murders in our city, so many. We just had one this past weekend, and I begin to contemplate and think, how is it that we expect these young African-American boys and men to be able to feel like they've been wrong by someone, and just say, you know, I'm sorry? So you can live to see another day when we have our leaders in position, who don't even like each other, and won't even apologize when they've done something wrong? Well, as a citizen, I came down here to address this matter. No one has been wronged like I have been wronged. So when you hear people come down here and call out a black mayor's name to hide their racist behavior, we're not going to give you a pass, especially when you come and you say "we." We, who are "we"? And then also, when you come to uphold something that I believe Captain Cherry said at a council meeting about those people and these people, then you come and give Dr. Whitaker a lesson, maybe you all haven't read his resume. He knows exactly the language that you all have spoken. I came here for an apology. I'm not even looking for one now. But I want the citizens that watch this to know, when you come down here and speak out against the injustices and the, and the things that go on in our city, you all are acting just like these young men in the street. Because for one, I took out a warrant against Mr. Moody on the 29th. On the 30th, the next day, a gentleman who has worked for Mr. Moody, who is, who has a criminal, a career criminal, took a stalking warrant out on me. And we live in this city, because I think you all, Dr. Gill, and you all honored this person this past weekend, and I, that blows my mind, but that's neither here nor there. So I guess that's a coincidence. One of the church mothers came down here and spoke in reference to bullying. I spoke that same council meeting on a Tuesday. That Thursday, that, that next day on my church page, one of the commissioners, and I emailed it to Deborah White, one of the commissioners on the planning commission, which is fine, because I think I'm sexy, if you want to know the truth, but he called me a fat, his name is William Devers, he called me a fat Al Shopton, and called me a disgrace. Two day, a day after that, she and I both got a summons to fix up something in my yard and, and for her to paint. Who paints in the wintertime? So, again, that's a coincidence, because even though it came that Thursday, they made sure they backdated it for two weeks on the actual paper. So then, I guess, another phone call, Sheriff Bill Watson is over here at the circuit court, asking about your ministerial license, and we all know that that's your friend. And I'm trying to figure out, what did I do so wrong, that I have all these things happening to me, because I spoke out? I said the last time that you can put me in jail, that's not going to deter me. My grandmother told me, don't tell you to kill me, because then you might do that. But I'm telling you, I'm not scared. Why did you call me, sir?
Thank you, Mr. Randall. Dr. Whitaker?
Yes, I, I do have a question following up with that, that I think, whenever...
Do you need Mr. Randall back up?
No, this is to Mr. Wilson, because what he is saying is that you called him about a tape in a private matter, is that correct?
Dr. Whitaker, I was not here at the last meeting, but you brought up an email that I had sent to city council concerning the payment of legal, legal fees.
No, no, I'm referring to the...
Well, I'm, I'm getting, I'm getting there with that. As a result, none of us, no one has heard the tape. No one on city council has heard the tape, and I haven't heard the tape. I was requesting a copy from Reverend Randall, because the council has to make a decision whether or not it's going to pay Mr. Moody's legal expenses, should he prevail in, in the litigation. And it, it, I felt it was incumbent upon me to get the facts together, so council could make an informed decision. That's why I requested, no other reason.
Because that's a, that's a private, that was a private matter, that's why I was concerned.
Well, we don't know that it was a private matter. The only allegations we have about this are Reverend Randall's statements here at, at the city council meeting. I don't know, I haven't heard the tape, I don't know what Mr. Moody said.
Right, the reason I'm saying that is because there has not been any lawsuit filed against the city. Those were, those were private lawsuits, so I'm, I'm just curious why you were requesting. But you answered, you answered my question.
Thank you, that's, that's why, sir.
Madam Clark?
Terry Gosage?
Good evening. My name is Terry Gosage, and I reside in the wonderful section of Port Norfolk. I'll say those people in Port Norfolk, because I'm one of those people in this city. I've been here 13 years with my wife, my two teenage children, and we live with my mother-in-law. I also will say that I am a city employee, and hope my remarks will not receive any retribution. So I'll go on record with that. I'm proud to be an employee of this great city. I work at the Social Services Department, with the Title IVE Eligibility Funding for Foster Pro, Foster Care Program. Mr. Rowe, I'm going to be sad to see you leave us, because I think you've done a fine, outstanding job for this city. This city is better off, because you have been our city manager, and I have been praying since you've announced your leaving, for the person who's going to come in behind you. Because I truly do believe that God has a person for this job, and regardless of their skin color, or their genitalia, that he's got the right person to come in. I watch the public work sessions and these council meetings on Channel 48. I'm grateful for that, because I do work during the daytime, so a lot of times on my weekends, I'm watching what you all do for us. I appreciate the back and forth that you give, because it shows us what you really are thinking, and so that shows us what we need. I don't expect you to agree with each other all of the time. We're all human, we all have different opinions, and so I don't expect you to agree. But I do expect you to be cordial, respectful. I understand that monies are being spent in order for all of us to learn just how many contracts have been let into the skin color and genitalia of those individuals. What I'd like to know is, when this study comes out, and we do learn exact numbers and all that, as a white man, who is a minority in this city, does that mean that you will take on hiring, letting contracts, hiring employees, based on someone's skin color or their genitalia, because of this disparity study? That scares me. Maybe it shouldn't, because I am a white man, and I'm a minority in this city, but it does scare me. Our fire and police, Mr. Toller, like you said last time, I don't care their skin color, their genitalia, when they come to my home, makes no difference to me at all. And if you're going to hire someone based on that, I just don't think it's good, and I don't think it's wise. I just, I don't, and it scares me that we have some who solely base their life on that. I would like to address, Dr. Whitaker, but as I have learned, I shouldn't do that. I will simply ask that, please, do not start making your decisions based on someone's skin color or their genitalia. I could not hire or fire someone solely based on that, could I? No, I couldn't, it's against the law. The city charter, which I went on the state, the Commonwealth's website and read, all of the appointed positions, it states that you will hire, excuse me, based on the professional criteria. Doesn't say anything about hiring based on skin color or genitalia. So please, don't let yourself fall into that trap, that you've got to hire someone just because their skin color, or their genitalia. That doesn't do the city any good. No good at all. I thank you for what you do. You have my prayers, each and every one of you, because you have to deal with us. Thank y'all, God bless you.
Mr. Gosage, let me just, first of all, let me thank you for your professionalism and, and your bravery for coming up as an employee and, and making your comments. And you're right, we're not always going to all agree.
Right.
But we do have to be respectful of each other, and when you're looking at, at different things, we all bring a different perspective to the table, and that's why the citizens elected what you see up here. And it's our job to be able to do the things that we think is right for all the citizens. And when you look at things, and you brought up two different issues, and I think they're two separate issues, about hiring because of a skin color for a manager, or attorney, or clerk, and I don't, I don't, I don't believe anyone has implied a certain color...
It hasn't been implied, but it's coming.
Okay. But the, the issue of equality, and making sure that everyone, and I'm sure you would agree, as a minority, white male, as you put it, that you want to make sure that we have equity in this city for all citizens. You want to feel that if you came and tried to get something, whether you got it or not, you got a fair shot at it. And if you lost because of certain things, we have a right to tell you that, so you can get better and come back the next time around. And unfortunately, those types of things haven't happened, not just in Portsmouth, but in a lot of cities. And cities all across this country are struggling with this whole issue of lack of equality, and how do you fix that gap? How do you fix the gender gap? One of the things I spoke at Regent University about is about the women, the gender gap. Women are still making only 77% of what a white male makes. And in 1963, a law was passed by Congress that said, you can't do that. And still today, in 2015, women are doing the same jobs that their Caucasian male counterparts are doing, and they're making 77% less. And when you look at black females and Latino females, it's worse. A black female makes 56% of a white Caucasian in the same profession, and a Latino woman makes about 48 or 50. So you're talking about equity, you're talking about doing our job as elected officials and trying to lead a city, and make sure that not only just women, but minorities, and whoever... gets a fair shot at whatever it is they're doing. So I want to thank you for coming up. The only reason I responded to you is you were very professional in your comments, even though you sound concerned, and I want you not to be concerned because this is about equality, it is about fairness. And at the end of the day, and someone mentioned, you've got two business people here, we lose contracts all the time. I just want to make sure I lost, well, how I lost, what I lost on, and what I need to work on, because I'll be back next week with another proposal and another opportunity.
And that would be my main question, is if I were to apply for a contract next to someone maybe different skin color, we were equally qualified, how would you base your decision? Would it come down to, we've got to give it to someone of a different skin color? I just, I can't accept that.
I understand, I understand. And there's federal guidelines and all that help all of our localities go through this process, and some of the regions that are doing extremely well now, I mean, you look, just, just go up in Minneapolis, the Twin Cities, they struggle with that same issue, but they face their diversity issues head-on. And it's not black and white there, there are other different nationalities that exist in those regions. Go to Tucson, Arizona, go to these places where they have faced those things, and we have yet come to grips with those things. And so, it's, it's on us, it's on us as leaders to do that. So, again, I appreciate your comment.
And also on us to make sure that you do it fairly.
You're exactly right.
Thank y'all, thank you for your time.
Absolutely, and thank you for what you've done with the city and Social Services.
Appreciate it, God bless you all.
I think Dr. Whitaker has a question.
Yes, I just want to say, so that you don't leave out misinform, that in your reading, you might want to also read up on a disparity study and the recommendations that come out of it. I find it interesting that you have categorized yourself as a minority. If you go and read the report from the school board, you will find that even if you consider yourself a minority male, that white males have done extremely well when it comes to getting contracts from the school board, in the tune of over 90% of them. And so, even in your minority status that you are claiming, you're doing very well. But we have to do a scientific approach to correcting it, and we have a lot of children that watch these school board meetings. I've been approached by several who have indicated they watch it, and I don't want that type of misinformation going out, what you just stated as far as what it is...
Population-wise, I am in the minority here.
Well, not that misinformation as far as how it is corrected, and so it is not as anecdotal as you're trying to make it sound, but it's a very scientific approach that we'll be taking.
When you base it solely on someone's, or it is.
Right, well, just, you know, I'm not going to go back and forth with you, but, you know, I'm just trying to inform you because Dr. King said it's very dangerous when you are sincerely ignorant or consciously stupid.
Thank you, sir.
I think I was just put down, wasn't I? That's amazing, Dr. Whitaker.
Thank you, Mr. Gosage, good night. Councilman Meeks?
Thank you, Mayor. The disparity study and the way you asked the question, how's it equal? The minority contractor will get more points or a percentage more than a regular white company or big business or small business, they'll get a percentage more. And like the mayor said, state laws and federal laws are there, but it goes back to costing the taxpayers more. The only thing that irritates me about this whole piece is those companies aren't coming from Portsmouth. They're going to come from Richmond, North Carolina, wherever, and our taxpayers are going to pay that percentage. That's 6, 8, or 10%. It all comes back to the taxpayers.
Thank you, Ms. Meeks.
Ms. Kintrel Devon?
Good evening, Council, my name is Kintrel Devon, I reside in Newport. I'm here tonight to speak on behalf of, I would say, majority of the citizens of Portsmouth. We don't care about your personal vendettas against each other, we want the business of our city conducted, and we want results. I don't see any boys on this council, I don't see any girls on this council, I see elected officials. Now, one side may say, we didn't elect them, it doesn't matter, they represent the majority, and they are here because they ran a campaign and they won the votes. Those who did not vote, sit on the fence, keep quiet. Those who do not like the candidates that sit before us tonight, keep quiet. At the end of the day, we are here to get business done on the behalf of the city of Portsmouth. The violence, verbal abuse that goes on in this council is ridiculous. I am pushing, pushing a stop the violence movement in our city, and I'm asking, Kintrel, how can you do that when those who call themselves leaders come to the council with a smile, with their educated selves, and insult each other? Where does it start? It starts right here at the head. I don't personally know Dr. Whitaker, but when I asked him a question concerning his campaign, I asked him one question, can you stand if you have to stand alone? He looked me in my face and said, I have already done that, Google me. I appreciated that because I don't have time for fluff. Fluff moves us nowhere. So if he didn't sell fluff and he's still sitting before us, I think he should be respected, just like Mr. Moody. Councilman Moody, it is what it is. But for candidates, for citizens to say they have never been more disappointed in the city of Portsmouth because Dr. Whitaker sits on this council, flashback. I remember a council who was involved in domestic violence, that was the most disappointing moment of my life in the city of Portsmouth when it came to leadership. No one came here and bashed the citizen, the council member, that got themselves caught up, and personally, I'm tired of your personal business hitting this podium, I really am. Because we want movement, we want action. Lastly, I'm here because we do need a cost of living increase. I went on the website because we was discussing, I saw the meeting, when we was discussing wage increase. How can we say we honestly want to, and decrease poverty when our city officials have staff members making $7.40 an hour? That is, that's ridiculous. I checked for myself. I also called Congressman Bobby Scott's office to find out if a city municipal can increase the cost of living on their own. They have that liberty. So there shouldn't be a full-time job for an adult working for the city of Portsmouth, a janitor. I did my own homework, I don't mind doing that, making $7.40 an hour, that's less than $20 a year. That is poverty, and I agree with Dr. Whitaker. We cannot stop poverty by making working poverty, it doesn't work. And if I'm helping you, keeping your cleaning, your company clean, scanning your food, and I scan one pack of chicken, and that is more than what I make an hour, we have a problem. So what are you saying, our citizens are not worth more than a pack of chicken? One pack, that's all they're saying, raise the increase. So I'm asking each of you to put your mouth where your vote is. If you really support the citizens of Portsmouth, and we want to bring down poverty within our city, vote on it. Vote on it, come together, stop discussing Mr. Moody, stop discussing Dr. Whitaker, he's here now. Lastly, I'm a firm believer, if you drink, if you make the Kool-Aid, you can sip the Kool-Aid. Mr. Moody, I remember you talking about Dr. Whitaker's wife in an email that was sent out to a lot of people, and I personally address you, I know you don't remember, but I have, and I can bring it. I personally ask you to stop discussing this man's wife because it was disrespectful, and you came back and said to me, you'll do what you feel. So my thing is, your wife was discussed, sip the cup.
Mr. Moody?
Thank you, Mayor. My question is to the city attorney. We hearing from Dr. Whitaker and some citizens that, about a living wage, I think it's referred to, and also about City Council voting to increase the minimum wage in our city. What, Mr. Attorney, what jurisdiction do we have on both of those?
Mr. Moody, the City Council can always raise, by putting in the budget, by directing the manager to, to create a budget that has everyone, that pays everyone whatever they want to pay them, the council wants to pay. It has to meet minimum wage, you can, you can specify, if you want, that they, that no one for the city be paid less, below the poverty level. Council with, with the city's money can do whatever it wants in terms of compensating city employees. In terms of, and, but in terms of dictating what the private sector does, the Attorney General has ruled, has issued two opinions that in, for contracts, construction contracts, professional contracts, and the procurement of goods, the, that, that cities do not have that power under the Dillon Rule. There's some, excuse me, there's some question, given some recent legislation in Richmond, as to whether they're, they've retreated from that, but I've only found three jurisdictions in the Commonwealth of Virginia who have what's called a living wage, and those jurisdictions were Charlottesville, Alexandria, and Arlington, and all of them limit their, limit their requirement of a living wage to non-professional services, and in, in at least one case, it is, involves contracts with the city in excess of $100,000 performed on city property. So, it's a very restrictive, and it's, it's, it's a, and it's, until the General Assembly got involved, it was very, very clear that it was not allowed. There seems to be a possibility that they can do it, but the other, I did correspond with one of the attorneys from one of the, one of the cities that has it, and they decided they were going to treat the Attorney General's opinions as advisory as opposed to mandatory. But you do that at your own risk in a Dillon State, Dillon Rule State.
Thank you. Thank you. Dr. Whitaker?
I was going to ask Mr. Mayor if we could, after we get through the budget process, have a workshop with information, it's too much to try to consume in this session as far as a living wage discussion, I think is a very relevant and pertinent discussion we need, we need to have as it relates to poverty, but not tonight.
Okay, yeah, I think that's a good idea. All right, ma'am clerk?
Mr. Mark Adaldic Yutrowski?
And as Mark comes up, I just want to make sure we all know, this is a huge topic throughout our country, and there are localities as well as states that are addressing this issue and discussing this, so we're not unique here, and it probably is a good opportunity to educate ourselves on what we as a locality can do in a Dillon Rule-type state. But it's a real relevant topic. Thank you, Ms. Devon, for bringing it up, and I think Dr. Whitaker may have brought it up last meeting, but, so for discussion and for information and education. With that, sir, good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, honorable members of Council and fellow citizens. Councilmember Whitaker, I applaud you for taking the lead in trying to ensure that we have equity in the hiring of police and fire officials. I applaud you for pushing forward the notion of a living wage. Many places that I consider progressive in our country and in the world have been moving in that direction, some of them implementing reforms that many people said were not possible, were not desirable, would have dire consequences. But going back to the mayor's point about people leaving Hampton Roads, in droves, if we were paying a living wage in this region, it would be a magnet to people who want to raise families and prosper. So I'm happy that you're out there on the cutting edge. I want to say, in regard to my neighbor, Ms. Ashbery's, Ms. Ashbery's address earlier, I disagree with much of what she had to say, and the way she said it. In private conversation, and I don't feel I'm revealing any, any deep dark secret here, she said to me she doesn't believe in political correctness. Well, I do. Political correctness is what my parents taught me as politeness, we've just come up with a more formalized term for it. It's showing sensitivity to the wounds that other people have suffered, whether you have or not. There needs to be a recognition in this city, in this state, in this nation, and in this world, that all of us have not traveled the same path to where we are today. Some people have had to travel a path with weights tied to their legs, or shackles, and to dismiss other people's concerns as being irrelevant beneath your need for attention shows gross insensitivity. I know Ms. Ashbery is a caring individual, but she has a hardness in her heart on certain subjects. It is a blindness that a lot of us who are underpigmented share with regard to racism. You know, I can stand up before you and say, I am not a racist. Racism is a sickness. It's an individual sickness, it's a social sickness. And just as your diagnosis, as your own doctor, is suspect, so is this pronouncement. We have a personal blindness toward our own racism, we can't see it. What we can do is work in good faith with other people of goodwill to try to deal with this problem. I believe it can go away. I believe when my generation is interred in Mother Earth, it will probably be eradicated from this country. Because among millennials, it seems to be a far smaller issue than it is among us older folks. However, I have not given up hope that in my lifetime, I can see an end to it, just as I've seen an end to smallpox. They are both diseases with grave consequences for humanity. But I believe we can cure racism too. So thank you, sir, for being on the cutting edge. I do believe that civility is important. I believe that what I saw in the council work session tonight was a very hopeful sign because all of you behaved like adults, and that's gratifying to me. You cannot lead this community forward in any significant way if you cannot comport yourselves as adults among yourselves. So keep up in that vein. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Let me, let me just comment, Mark, if I would, on Mr. Yutrowski, and thank you for your comments and the way you displayed it, because, again, this is a major issue within our country, well, worldwide, but there are progressive regions that are doing things in this regard, and that's what's attracting our young, educated children. Because as you said, those millennials, rarely does this conversation come up. And when these kids are going off to college and going to these places, and they want to come and start a business, they think they got a great idea, they're looking for somebody to embrace that, and then they get introduced to, well, you're not in the good old boy system, or you're not in a clique, and all of those types of things that run these people away. Because they don't have time to figure out your clique or your good old boy system when they've got other friends that they've been to universities throughout this country saying, we're, we're in the Midwest, or we're down south, or we're up north, and things are booming, and we're over here, and they're trying to find out, can you, Mr. Mayor, introduce me to Ms. Simmons because I need some help, and I don't know how to get to her because I'm not in her circle? And those people don't have time for that type of stuff. We've got to come to grips with that and make sure we're embracing it. I shared in the region, and the reason I asked you to state that, it was a young man who was one of the millennials that stood up. And he asked all of the mayors, name something specific that you would do in your city policy-wise to cause me and my friends to stay here in Hampton Roads. Okay? And I shared with him that this isn't a new conversation. We as mayors have been talking for the last several years. As a delegation, we sent a group of people. We sent about eight or nine people throughout this country. They went to Orlando Regional. They went to Tucson, Arizona. They went to Austin, Texas. They went to Charlotte. They went to Atlanta. They went to all of these areas, and they talked to the Chamber of Commerce. They talked to the localities there. They found out a number of things. One of the things they found out is, folks there don't get along either, these localities. But they understand survivability and sustainability. And they understand in order to have an incubator and be able to have this welcome mat for these great ideas that they had to change. And some of them are working with universities down in Orlando. And I told the young man there, I like the Orlando model. They've got the University of South Florida, where all of the chambers and all of the localities are working and using that as a clearinghouse for startup businesses and things of that nature. We're trying to get there. The conversation has started here, but we've got to break all of these other cliques and good old boy systems else, they're not coming here. And thanks for saying what you did, but I had to get that out because that young man asked us, and none of us as mayors could answer him from a policy level of what we would do in our cities to cause him and his friends to stay. And I did plead to the young man, just don't leave. We're going to fix it. So thank you, sir, for your comments. Good night.
There are no additional speakers this evening.
Okay, Dr. Edmonds.
Thank you, Mayor. You know, I've, I've lived in Portsmouth all of my life, from project on up to where I currently live. Portsmouth is one of the cities I think is great because I was born here. But the greatness of Portsmouth is not centered on one person's shoulder. It's on all of our shoulders, working together, good and the bad. And in looking back over time, Portsmouth has gone through a major renaissance. And I'm just happy glad that it has. Because when I can walk and ride down Frederick Boulevard and see all the new things, I can claim it's singular, but all of us, I don't care how much we claim it as one, look what's happened under my watch. It took all of us. It took the democratic process for us to vet it and to vote and to make it happen. Some of us won in the vote, some of us lost in the vote, but Portsmouth still prevails. And no matter how the onion is diced up, might not like the way it smells, it might make some of us cry, but this is our city. And when we stand up and we get in this place to make comments, not only are citizens that don't come to council see, but I'm sure that it gives them a bitter taste. And it seems like the bad is more recognized than the good. But I can declare, in my sixty-five years of living, we've come a long way. And we have yet a longer way to come. One of the guiding principles that I've learned in my life is to do unto others as you would have them to do unto you and to treat others. And the hardest thing to do is to be quiet when somebody is attacking. The only way you can make it is to hold on to a stronger power than yourself. So I would hope that sometime we don't let the smoke and the misspoken things cover up the greater things that have been done. We all, none of us are perfect, but it's good that we know how to get in touch with a perfect person, a high being. So I'm just glad to let you know that the council has done its due diligence, takes four votes to carry an issue, and that's the democratic process. We don't fuss at it. That's just the way that we live. But eyes have not seen and ears have not heard yet the greater things that Portsmouth is going to be able to do. Love you all. Good night.
Let me, Dr. Edmonds, since you opened that door, thank you for that comment. The manager and I, with our team that went to New York talking to and speaking to the rating agencies, pretty much conveys a lot of what you just said and we talked about, and they were impressed. And I could feel the vibe, and I shared with them when we came out of the meetings, that we're going to have that negative outlook removed because they could see the progress that we had made in this city and the things and the challenges that we had taken head on and resolved. And you're correct. And the manager and I actually got in a nice conversation, I think it was with Moody's, talking about that issue and how we both were born and raised here and the things we like about our city and how all of those types of things resonate. So thank you for bringing that up. I only brought that up because I want the manager to inform all of our citizens like he did in the work session about our bond issue. We went up there to get a rating so we could refinance about fifty million dollars in bonds. And that's going to take place hopefully tomorrow. John, so if you could, yeah, please.
Yes, sir. Tomorrow, we're taking bids on refinancing fifty million dollars of existing debt. We're not changing the term of the debt. But the real good news in this, and from that, we hope to get a lower interest rate just like a person would refinance their house and come out with a lower house payment. But the real good news is what Mayor Wright talked about, is going to New York, to the bond rating agencies, a meeting with all three. Moody's had us on a watch. They had us rated on a negative outlook. And they're required to review that in two years. And our two years is up now. And from our visit and the good hard work that city council has done over the last two years to solve such difficult things as making the pension system solvent, reducing ratably the other post-employment liability amount from two-hundred-and-nineteen million dollars that we have to carry on our balance sheet to forty-five million, was evidence enough, evidence enough to change Moody's rating, our credit score, from double A negative outlook to double A stable. And that.
John, we can thank you for your stewardship and your leadership for making that happen.
Let me just say, I asked the manager to say that because it coincides with what Dr. Edmonds just said about the growth and the great things that we are doing here in this city. And we too often get caught up in our own personalities, and we don't look at the greater good that's going on in this city from an economic development standpoint and all of these other issues. And to be able to go to New York and to be able to present our case and to get this favorable rating and to now go on the market tomorrow to try to get a good rate that will save us, hopefully somewhere in the neighborhood of about three million dollars during a tight budgetary year, that's a big deal. And so we've got a lot to be proud of. And I think the doctor brought up, it's all of us. We tend to want to keep singling out, it's my idea, I did it. This has been a process that we've been working on in this city for a great while. And a lot of you have contributed in that success, serving on boards and commissions and things of that nature. And so I am proud to be able to go and do that as the mayor of this city, to take that credit. But that credit belongs to all of you and everyone up here. This work has happened. John came in on it. We started it with a manager before him. We made some real tough decisions five years ago about some issues that we had to grapple with here in this city. And they're paying off now. So I don't want to short sight anyone, or I don't want anybody to take credit, and nobody up here is doing it. And Bishop, you said that, and that's the reason why I asked the manager to. It is about all of us working together and the things that we've been able to accomplish. And it has been a tough five or six years. But when folks in New York are recognizing that and looking at our physical ability and how we handle that, that speaks volumes. So sometimes we need to rise up above our personalities and those type of things to try to spend as often time as we can gagging each other and trying to make each other look bad and embarrass each other because the television cameras on. There's a lot of good work that we're doing here. And so I asked the manager to make that presentation to you only because of Dr. Edmonds, your comment. So again, there's a lot of great things going on in our city. We're going to end with Dr. Whitaker. Yes, sir.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I certainly didn't want to let this meeting pass without recognizing this week, this past weekend and Sunday, recognizing the fiftieth anniversary of the Selma March and the Bloody Sunday. Certainly would be remiss in being in a position that I'm in and not raised that. I recognize the fact that there are some within our community that are still deciding to walk across that bridge, hand in hand with Edmund Pettus. However, I'm determined to stay locked in hands with those who sacrificed and struggled so that I could be where I am today. And many of us who own this council are here as a result of a 1965 Voting Rights Act. And so I say that because I hope that people understand that I'm, I'm not up here to conform, but to transform. And I do that coming out of a rich heritage that fought and sacrificed so that I could be where I am today. And so I want to make that clear, that the folks that went ahead of me that have made a way for me to be here, I owe an obligation to them to remain true to myself and to always uphold the truth. Because I'm a firm believer that the truth will set you free.
All right, there's no further business. We're adjourned. Good night, everybody.